You know, coming down toward the end of the, you know, dreaded budget process. But once again, we appreciate your participation. The first one will be a city council briefing for the Virginia African American Cultural Center, Inc., Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond, founder and chairman. How are you?
Good afternoon, council members. It's good to see you. And I also, before starting, want to thank Councilman Michael Belushi and Councilman Aaron Rouse for sponsoring what we are sharing. As I told my board, it's more resurfacing because we did bring this up over almost a year and a half or so ago. And they felt that this may be something that may interest you all for what's coming around the Juneteenth. I want to start by saying one thing from another group that they shared, and I thought it was very important. By coming together to a sense of belonging with each other as part of a one-world family, by coming together to celebrate our humanity and our rich cultural diversity, we can tap into our curiosities to celebrate our humanity, empathy, and compassion across our differences, and find strength in the same oneness that unifies us all. And this relates to our title, Unity in Community. And I have partners here with me. I have Kate from the Vibes District and one of the other Vibes Districts co-founder, Laura Haber. She disappeared. Okay, going on with our Virginia African American Cultural Center in partnership with the Vibes since 2017, we present Unity in Community, a public art walk along the Virginia Beach oceanfront proposed for summer of 2022. As you can see, we're looking at this walk like a sandwich, unity being the top of the sandwich and community being the bottom. And in the center comes the ingredients: togetherness, inspiration, history, connectedness, kindness, understanding, love, acceptance, and the bottom part, community. What we're proposing is to promote positive public dialogue about important social issues, strengthen bonds between diverse community and local government, embrace and showcase the multicultural arts community in Virginia Beach, provide residents and visitors to the boardwalk an engaging, positive memory to share on social media and with friends and family that celebrates all people. We're engaging youth leaders from NSU, ODU, and Virginia Wesleyan, and of course, I didn't put this right in there, but I meant to also include the tide water communities to connect young adults and artists with this project. And I'll turn over to Kate to talk a little bit about how we plan to do this.
Thank you. So Unity in the Community uses a project template that the Vibes first initiated in 2019, where we were able to have an architect on our board create a custom framework that sandwiches very safely and in a non-damaging way to the boardwalk railing to utilize the strength of that structure, and is built with two-by-fours and very strong screws to put up temporary murals. So if you are standing on the boardwalk, the mural that you would see is six foot tall, the artwork piece, two feet down to the ground, and then 16 feet wide. So passersby both walking on the boardwalk can take pictures in front of the artworks and look at them from a distance. But then on the backside of that same structure, if you suspend a canvas down the back of that, it would be approximately 16 feet wide by approximately 12 feet tall. And again, these were two examples that happened in 2019, one for the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame and the other for the American Music Festival. This is an example of that framework without any artwork on it. You can see that it's a temporary wooden structure. It can be built and removed without damaging the existing structure. It does require professional installers, so we would hire a contractor to do that. And it's utilizing architectural renderings and structural engineering that were already previously reviewed and approved. This process was tested twice, as we mentioned before. The idea for the Unity in the Community is to space these throughout the boardwalk railing in strategic locations, perhaps next to public access points. And the concentration of the murals would be most located in the highest-traffic area of the central beach. With guidance from the Special Events Office and in careful planning, we would make sure to not interrupt any other special events happening. And also with strategic planning, we can mitigate any line of sight concerns from private businesses.
And part of what we're proposing is to have this open on Juneteenth weekend. And starting, working backwards, you can see where we'll do a call for artists and a 27 artwork review and selection with our Virginia Beach Public Art Committee. The artists will then be notified, a press release will be announced, and the construction will go between June 13th to the 15th. And the banners installed, artists begin painting, and then the afternoon or evening proclamation and unveiling of these art displays on the public display area. Some of who we're going to have, we're going to invite the media to welcome the photographs, finished artwork, and artists. We'll ask our mayor for a proclamation on boardwalk or in the park. The idea commissioners, which of course is the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Accessibility Commissioners, to come out to give a welcome and be acknowledged. And the Human Rights Commission, who works along with us, to be welcomed and acknowledged. We plan to have nice, peaceful cultural music piped along the boardwalk for that event hour as it happens. And potential featured guest curators of virtual panels with the artists. As you can see, one of our potential guests, and he did a wonderful presentation during our recent six-part artist series, which was virtual. He's nationally acclaimed, and that is Renee Dickinson. And he knows about massive marriage of colors that reach each person on a unique level. His paintings can be found on many private collections, including Oprah Winfrey, Barry Gordy, and many other such celebrities. And he has a longstanding relationship with The Temptations and has provided artwork for their album. He is well-known for his philanthropic work and was someone we're considering to come up. In fact, during ours, he gave us a painting about this high to auction off, and that was one of Aretha Franklin. And someone you know who won the bid was Delcino Miles. And I told her someone else is asking, she says, "I'll overbid them on that." So that tells you a little bit about it. And Kate, can you tell them about Clayton?
And then for a potential guest curator from the Virginia Beach area, actually, an artist from Norfolk, is Clayton Singleton. He was featured on the Veer cover for 2020 as Murlist of the Year. He's been featured in exhibits at Virginia Mocha and the Chrysler as a very well and respected local artist.
Okay, and the third to that, where we not only have artists, and they can help be some of the judges, we'll have a potential guest speaker, Morgan Avery McCoy. She was one of the supporting actresses in the movie Harriet. And she's within our area, and she will come and tell a couple of her stories, one-woman show. And she does a fantastic job. In fact, the first time I heard her was over at the Slover, where she did From the Slave Women, the black girl from the slave house to the white house. And then this one she will be doing for us is presenting from a film, because she's the producer, stooping till standing. In other words, the person who's working and able to support their children and gradually to be so proud that they have achieved a lot. So she will be one that they can ask questions and share about her experiences. And we'll have maybe some other spoken word out there, like the Teens with a Purpose and others. Okay, talk about the unity.
So in terms of unity in the community, really wanting to drive home the message to all the visitors that come out to see those murals and participate in this Juneteenth celebration, we wanted to have perhaps either painted rocks or coloring pages featuring some of the mural artwork for people to engage with while they're on the boardwalk and to take home with them. And then, as you can see, we do have a project budget outlined that identifies everything from the cost of construction to the canvas, the blank canvas banners, to paying the artists to come out and paint, touch-ups or repairs for the duration of this mural project, which can be on public display for one to three months, depending on your approval, and then also the demolition of those frames to remove them back from the boardwalk.
Next, you can see some of our community partners involved besides VAACC and the Vibes, the Virginia Beach Cultural Affairs, Mocha, Teens with a Purpose, the Human Rights Commission, Listen, Learn, and Love, and Live on Atlantic. So we hope that you will take this into serious consideration, because this will not only showcase the rich diversity of cultural and artistic expression from within and across our communities, it will create space for reflection and healing through meditation, through critical thinking about it. So we thank you all, and this ends our presentation.
Okay, any questions? Barbara?
I'm just totally lost. I was sitting here reading the letter from the Cultural Affairs Alternative Humanities Commission, talking about they're not being able to fund everything that was requested and that they need additional money. And then we are talking about the Vibes getting money in this budget, and we have, the African American Cultural Center gets an allocation. But this is in addition to all of those things, or is this one of these components? And how do we determine what's in these components and what's additional? And how is this in relation to the Juneteenth celebration we're looking at today?
This, in fact, we did not, were not aware of this other Juneteenth event until, for me, yesterday.
Somehow, we've got to get all of these things together.
They should have been, and someone is not talking.
Right. I mean, if we could kind of figure out what's what, so we know what we're doing, because in doing things piecemeal, we total, I'm losing track. I just don't know, I mean, what's considered the Vibes monies, what's considered African American Cultural Center monies, what's Arts and Humanities money, what's all these other monies? We just seem to be, I'm not sure anymore. If we could kind of make a overall accounting so that we know, or are we going to just keep adding piecemeal things? That's, that's when we lose track.
Okay.
And that's when you run into trouble with the budget.
Ms. DeHany, is this asked possibly for this year's budget, not next year's budget?
Yes.
Is this for this year's budget?
Uh huh.
Okay, that's what, it's for this year's budget.
So we're looking at it coming from fund balance or something like that, that's in this year's budget?
So I wasn't aware of this, so it would likely come from fund balance or some other source.
Did you say how much it was?
We have three options that we have down, and we're hoping our sponsors will jump in and support us as we're looking at this, because this was something we actually had planned even last year and before, and weren't able to move this forward. And if you look at our budget, we'll go back to it. We've got it up there.
Okay, Michael.
You can see there's ten.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, just for clarification, this request, as I understand it, would be accommodated in this year's budget. And there is a fund balance that could be made available to address this. And we can discuss that in greater detail if the council determines they'd like to move forward. But I'd just like to take a pause. Mr. DeHany, do you have?
I just wanted to clarify, the budget director said there's funding available in the City Council Emergent Needs Fund, should the city council want to use funding in this year's budget to pay for it. There's funding available in the City Council Emergent Needs Fund.
So we've got to decide what are our emergency needs, and that this is the top priority?
Well, I don't, well, if I could, Mayor, if I could continue, thank you. I just, first of all, want to applaud Dr. Ross Hammond, Kate Pittman, Laura Huber, and the many others who worked on this project. Many of us are familiar with this project because you brought it to us last year at a time when Juneteenth was being recognized as a state holiday, at a time when there's great tension in our community, including around subjects of race and, but many other things. And you brought us a project that elevates and prioritizes unity, connectedness, love, kindness, creative expression at our resort, which is sort of the public square hallmark of Virginia Beach, that made those virtues about connectedness and kindness and loving each other and celebrating our differences on display at the resort, which is sometimes, not always, but sometimes viewed as not an accessible place for locals. And I think that since you brought this last year, and I don't think you were given a fair hearing on this topic, which is why Councilman Rouse speak for himself, but I think that's why we asked for this briefing today. Since that time, the issues that we're experiencing as a community are only getting worse, necessarily not better. And so we need projects like this that connect us as a community more than ever. I think that, I think that producing a project like this around Juneteenth is entirely appropriate. I think it would be just something that would set Virginia Beach apart as a community that's celebrating our differences, celebrating creative expression, and it would be of great value. I know we look at those numbers and see, see numbers that looks expensive, but actually it's a bargain for the type of community project that we would have here. So I think we should strongly consider this. I know the timeline is tight, but I think it's the right thing to do, and it's the right time to do it. And especially considering that your proposal didn't get a fair hearing last year, I think it's, we owe you a fair hearing this year, and I think, I hope that's what you get here today, because I think what you're offering to do is to bring and elevate those conversations that you mentioned on slide, I think it's the next slide, in our community, which is something we really need. So I want to thank you for it. I could say more, but I'd like to yield to Mr. Rouse.
Thank you. Mr. Aaron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to start off by thanking Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond and Kate and Laura for your work in, on this, as well as our cultural arts department as well, for your work on this and bringing this forward. I must say, you know, I think last year was the first year we recognized Juneteenth as a holiday throughout our city, which is a huge step forward for all of us. And surely, there's cultural advantages to making sure every part of our community is recognized and celebrated. But, you know, Councilmember Henley does bring up a good point, especially right before the budget, you know, it seems to be, you know, there's this Juneteenth event over here, there's this event over there, there's the Culture, African American Cultural Center, as well as the Vibes, Mocha, there's so many different sections within our budget that we are having, having to look at and to confront. And so while I do agree we should strongly consider this, I would like to, I'd like to hope we can get this on, on one page, so there isn't a choice or, or, but there's an and going on. And I think, again, Councilman Henley has a good point of where does, I see this as a top priority as well within our, our community, just to simply making sure that we are elevating every single culture throughout our, our city. But as you know, one of the most important things of government, especially at the local level, is how do we pay for these things? And when we specifically have a budget? And so I would like, and I'm sure the council will have a robust discussion on how do we make, how can we get this enabled to, how do we get to, to make this event happen while balancing the budgets of all three of those different, I'll say, departments, so to speak, that we're looking at? And so that's one of the questions I have, because, again, as you stated, Dr. Hammond, that this other event, I don't know how they work together, are they working and concert with each other? I am, you know, unaware of that, and I would like more clarity on that. But let me just put a button in this also. The members and the volunteers that we appoint to boards and committees throughout our city, they are not the end-all to every presentation that comes before them. They are presented to give recommendations to this body, that authority lies within this body, which the people have elected. So, and I want to say that again, because oftentimes, we did, you know, this briefing was supposed to happen a year ago, and you all met some resistance from certain boards and committees out there. Well, again, we are an open committee, open to hear all of diverse ideas as well, and it's up to this body to determine whether or not we go forward with that. So I want to thank you for your perseverance and your steadfastness for continuing to push the envelope and bring this before us. Thank you.
Anybody else? Sabrina?
I'll use Sabrina, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and I certainly do, I believe, Juneteenth is an event that is worthy of celebration. And this body was, had the foresight to ensure that it was a holiday for the staff, but also highlighting it for the residents in our community. And so unfortunately, I don't remember this particular event, but nevertheless, I'm glad to hear more about it today. The other event that's being mentioned, I can clarify, and the gentlemen are here who actually are promoting that event, but it is a Juneteenth event as well. And in speaking to them, they mentioned that they had reached out to the African American Cultural Center last year, because they wanted to do something last year as well, and they reached out to kind of work together. And so I hope that going forward, we can collaborate, because that, that, I guess, they've reached out to connect with you, and hopefully, going forward, we can all work together, because truly with, you know, the substantial number of events that have left this community, we do need to replace those events with events like these Juneteenth events. The event that we're also looking at today is, has programmed events, entertainment, and so it is a bit different, but I can envision both of the programs coming together in terms of unity, supporting the community, and being a huge success that everyone can be proud of. So as was mentioned, I don't want to thank either or, I want to thank together, collaboration, unity, and we can do that.
Right, I thank you, if I could just mention in response, Mayor.
Yes.
I thank you, last year, there was something that we were all involved, because before it even became a holiday, we were doing Juneteenth in the community.
Sure.
And they mentioned, I didn't know the name of the group, in fact, I just got to learn what the acronym means yesterday when they called me. And I said, "Oh." They said, "Well, we've been meaning to get in touch with you about what we're doing or planning." But I officially got to know about it yesterday, and they sent me something around 6:00 something in the evening to let me know that this was going on. And I did ask them, "Who are your sponsors?", because we always have sponsors, and they mentioned your name, and have you reached out to me? And that hadn't happened. But anyway, I liked the mention of whatever we do, you know, working together, we're planning to do ours starting on the 19th, and even before that, I will be doing something at the Vibes stage from 9:00 to 12:00 that day. So at least now we know, and I mentioned to them, I will take this to my board for us to review for consideration. So that's just yesterday. Thank you.
And so I, just to respond, and the group is Team Lamb LLC, again, they're here in the building, and in communicating with them, they did mention that they reached out last year during that time. So I don't know what happened there.
Right.
But this is not their first time reaching out to you, from, from, or the center.
Yeah.
I won't say you, because I don't know if they talked to you, but they have mentioned that they reached out to the center, the cultural center.
Right.
Because this is a community, and they had the foresight to be inclusive. So I think that's a wonderful thing.
And, you know, so do I. I think it's important, it's just the time to knowing, but I'm glad I know now.
Yep.
And so am I, I'm glad I know now, too. Let's move forward and work together.
John?
Well, I don't know what's fair or not fair, because I'd have to watch everything, but I'd like to think that all our processes are fair. We may have omissions, but I'm not willing to pass judgment unless I can go back and resee all the proceedings that took place. But I do think this points out our problem, not their problem. One, we don't give guidance upfront as to what this council's priorities are. Number two, that means that the agencies and whatnot that work on our behalf and commissions aren't informed of what we think a priority is during their deliberations. And then when people aren't happy with that, we encourage, in running the process, bringing these back to us for one-of-one looks, when we really need to have, if that's the commissions, there ought to be some point in that process where all the commission deliberations get assessed for their alignment with our priorities, and we adjudicate them at one time, so we can see end to end. And we are, as Mr. Rouse pointed out, we're the final court. But right here, I don't see all the other things that didn't get funded. I just know the things that did. Can't fix that today, but this points out, when we don't do our homework to provide guidance upfront in October or early November, then we put these kind of pressures on ourselves, and we encourage, in running the process, and we end up doing this one-of-ones. That's my observation.
Thank you, Barbara.
That just brings it back to my original question, was, did you apply to the Arts and Humanities Commission for this? Because I see that they had 25 submissions, only three were fully funded, 21 were partially funded, and one was denied funding. So, I mean, what are the, what are the things that they funded, and what did they deny? And, I mean, I just would assume this is a Arts and Humanities type thing. So I think I just need to understand what this commission is doing and what they, what their role is, and what's outside of that, that should come to us directly or not. I think it's something we really need to get a handle on in this budget, because these people are saying that they have a gap and they would like some additional funding. Well, if we do additional funding for them, are they going to be covering these kinds of things, or are they still going to be separate? I think this is, this is something this council needs to deal with right now.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, Rose, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm really confused about these different events, and I had no idea, I really didn't know about what you're presenting today, and it looks very beautiful. It really is, and I guess I'm really concerned at, it's May 3rd, and you've got a lot of work to do between now and June 19th. And this is something the council's going to have to decide on and prepare, or this is, and vote, and all that kind of stuff. And yet, we have this other issue, not issue, but thing on tonight, too. So I don't know why you're here so late, I don't know if it's our problem that you came so late. I just don't know, I'm confused. So, but I am concerned about the lateness of this and how this is going to affect you. And I'm concerned about the, the other. So, so, Mr. Mayor, I know you and Ms. Putin were working on the one for tonight, would you be willing to defer the one tonight so that they could all work together?
Yeah, that was going to be my suggestion, but Mr. Belucci, did you have something?
Well, I just want to offer some clarification. The first is, we met to discuss this months ago, particularly when we learned that you weren't given, and I will say it, a fair hearing last year. And so what you requested at that time, and we requested of the manager following the process, and I may, I'm pointing no fingers, I'm just revealing the process, we asked for a briefing on this. And today was the earliest day that the briefing could be scheduled, based on the other things that were going on. And so we were hoping, I was hoping, I mean, I'm willing to say, I think what you brought today, brought us today and last year, is a wonderful project. I think it's worthy of council support, I think it's worthy of community support, I think it's an important project, and I support it. And I hope, I wish this council would support it, too, because the processes, questions that we're discussing here are on us, they're not on you. You've brought this to us now twice, and twice it's become entangled in the process, which I think is unfair to you. So we, we went through the process, today was the earliest day that we could get it. They gave me assurances, when I spoke with them about a week ago, that you'd still be able to do it, assuming that you received council support. And I just couldn't really imagine a scenario, and they gave us some options here, it doesn't have to be the full thing, but I just couldn't imagine a scenario where council wouldn't want to support this Juneteenth community connecting this celebration, particularly given the history that exists with this particular proposal. And so I think it's a, still a reasonable request, I think it's still a reasonable timeline, and I think it's one, and they've, certainly the Vibes and the Cultural Center... and the Cultural Center and all parties involved have followed the process exactly as we have laid it out before them. And yet we keep, continue to be ensnared in the process. I don't think it's that big of a deal, but I think the fact that we continue to trip on our own selves, particularly related to a Juneteenth program, is reflective of not only the problems with our processes, but also the gaps and disparities that could exist as a result.
Okay, Guy, and then Sabrina.
A number of good points, I really can't disagree with anything you said, and I especially appreciate my eloquent friend here, who always really makes, makes my comments seem kind of pedestrian in comparison. But I did want to say, because I've got some experience, and I know Mr. Branch does too, without regard to how he may feel about this project, I do think this project has been vetted in the sense, I'm looking at how it's going to happen. This has been well thought out. It may seem late in the process because we're nearing the end of our year. But in terms of the thought that went into it, it's clear a lot of thought has gone into it. I think this project, I would, I would support this project, assuming we can find the funding for it, and we can talk about that. But I think in terms of the thoughtfulness of the work that's gone into it, it is both the kinds of things I would look, be looking for from my experience with, how do you put on an event at the Oceanfront? I think that work has been done. It is a tight schedule, but my confidence in the people that are bringing it forward is very high as well. So I would support it, and I think it's a doable project, and I hope we can find the funding for it.
Sabrina.
I think we all pretty much saying the same thing. We want to support Juneteenth, and we want to support it with community events. And so I'd just like to mention, as was already stated, time is of the essence. The funding, which is $15,000, again, only $15,000. That particular event has also gone through the process, procedures, have been working intimately with the city to get this program done. And so the only concern I would have about delaying one for another is that there are timeframes, there are contracts and different things that have to be implemented. Funding has to be submitted, and only delaying the process is going to cause problems with that, that particular event or their event. And so I think, of course, we can do both, but I really don't want to delay one for the other because they are at the point where they, you know, they do need to move forward and have been really working diligently within the city to do so. And so again, time is of the essence, as was already mentioned. And we really shouldn't prolong either one if we're going to do both. But I would say, if you're going to delay one, make sure you, we need to make sure we're going to find a way to do both and combine together, because we're all saying the same thing. So we should all work together to get the programs funded.
Okay, Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a, I second the Councilwoman Towers and Councilwoman Bellucci's effort in, in making sure, in specifically speaking about this event, since this is the one that's before us. And I don't want to conflate the two. I'm sure we have discussion on the, the separate one as well, but since you all are presenting this one, I'd like to keep the focus on this particular event. And that's, that's no, you know, shade or side of the other event. It's just a matter of process for me, keeping, keeping attention on this one. Do we know, Mrs. City Manager, how much is in our emergent needs fund? I sure like to find a way to, to fund this event.
Kevin? Mr. Mayor, members of council, $621,000 is remaining in the emergent needs funds.
And so if it's, you know, plausible that we could create an ordinance to supplement this festival, I'll be definitely open to sponsors for that as well, and we can bring that back next week for, for.
Okay, Ms. Hundley?
I would just like a list of what was before the Arts and Humanities Commission, what was funded at how much, and what they asked for, all 25 applications.
Okay, Mr. Bellucci.
Mr. Dyer, thank you. That, that information should be easily available. And, but I want to, I want to clarify, the, this proposal did not go before the Arts and Humanities Commission.
But is this something that is typical of what they would be?
It may be, but, but I think it's, but this conversation reveals that there are many vehicles by which community projects like this receive funding, as you well know.
That's what we need to watch out.
We have to watch, we have to watch out, but we can't, we certainly can't deny one on the basis that they should have gone through one when we circumvent those processes on a regular basis. And I think that's the challenge here. So that, that information certainly would inform this discussion, but I definitely don't think it would prohibit or in any way, for me, inform whether or not this proposal is worthy of funding. Because funding is acquired through various streams on a regular basis, as you know, of course.
Okay, anyone else at this point? If I can make a suggestion, and you know, I think Mr. Rouse brings forward a prudent suggestion, but I would also recommend to Council Lady Wooton, that the two groups get together and collaborate and come up with a unified plan. And since the, the way would only be a week, and this way you're working in concert and in collaboration. And I don't see one overstepping the other, I see the other one enhancing the other. So with the permission of the council, you know, the direction would be, now, are you also seeking or receiving any external funding that would affect, you know, the, the ask down there? Or is, you know, what we see up there, the ask?
What you see up there is the ask.
Okay.
And there are three options that we put.
Okay, so, but once again, if you, if we can, if you can get together with that Team Lamb, and you know, and once again, this is going to be fast and furious going forward this week, and come up with, you know, an overall plan, you know, with a reasonable number. And then once again, also, you know, and I'm going to, quite frankly, I was not aware of your plan when I met with Council Lady Wooton, you know, with these other folks, and my thought was, we have to do something. Okay? But now that we are aware of that, you know, this is what this body does. Let's, let's find the win-win here, okay? Mr. Duhany, are you okay on that? You know, with the, move forward with, you know, a resolution next week, but get the information to us on an expedited basis, please.
Okay, thank you, because they're lovely gentlemen, but information is important to reach out. So with that, this happened today.
And I think you'll come up with even a better, more robust, you know, program going forward that I, I think that will satisfy the needs. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to reconciliation now. I think it was Shakespeare said, we live in interesting times, but the fact is, we live in challenging times. You know, we are doing our first budget outside of the COVID during a time of financial strain due to inflation and other things. Okay? And, you know, this, there were a lot of challenges in putting a budget together, a lot of needs going forward. But I think, you know, we have to understand that what I've been telling to the public and a number of other folks, is that we had two pressing needs that had to be addressed. The first one was the four cent dedication that the people voted on in a referendum to tackle our number one priority, which is stormwater. We intend to honor that obligation in a lockbox format. You know, once again, you know, this has been, you know, between the do, every study over the years and everything, we are at the point of action, and I think our CIP, if I'm not mistaken, reflects that. And then number two, you know, was brought up many times by this council over the past year or so, is our labor force considerations, both in terms of recruitment and retention. But the other thing was fairness too, you know, in terms of getting a livable wage and things that were necessary that we had to do. And whether it be public safety being down in numbers, or taking care, or the folks that take care of our city and waste management, and, you know, public works and everything, the folks that go out there when there's a water main break, our number of part-time employees that were working technically below minimum wage when law was paying $15 an hour. This was a pressing priority that I think that we had to confront going forward. And both were incredibly costly. But once again, we're going to be coming out of the inflation one day. Hopefully sooner rather than later. And I think what we're looking forward to with the offshore wind, and what we're looking forward to with, with a lot of, you know, businesses we're going to be attracting with broadband and the cables, we have a bright future, but we have to keep our city functioning. But that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor Wilson.
I would like to have just five minutes to read it.
Yes, since we just got it.
Please, I want you to think about it.
I was going to read it out loud.
She's going to read it out loud.
I know, but I'd like to think about it and write when I'm reading. I would, I'll just go out and read it.
I could do the same.
No, I'll tell you what, well, can we recess then, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I'll tell you, how about a 10-minute recess, and then we'll come back.
I'd like to read.
Fair enough? Thank you.
We could have gotten off Friday.
10-minute recess. As Council Lady and Vice Mayor Wilson to go through an incredibly long oration, but it'll be worth it. Thank you.
So, and as the mayor said, you know, we, we've talked to each of you.
Oh, wait, hold on. First, we have a disclaimer that we have to do.
Brock and I have to make a state law disclosure, I'm following.
A disclosure by Mr. Holcomb and Mr. Moss before we get rolling.
Mr. Mayor, I'm an employee of the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office, and I have a conflict of interest letter on file.
Okay, John?
I am the spouse of a school teacher with the school board, and per the state law, I, and she makes more than $5,000 a year, so I have to also disclose I have a conflict of interest on the face, but because it's a general broad audience, I can assure the public that that in no way influences my vote or my determinations on this budget.
Okay, thank you, Brock.
Good to have teachers.
Yes, we love our teachers.
It is. And spouses who are teachers.
That's even better.
So as I was going to, as I was saying, you know, we've spoken to each of you. We've all had lots, we've heard from the public and the, the budget here, the, all the hearings from the, all different staff members, and, you know, it's a balancing act. It's a balancing act with finite resources to, to make sure, we look out for the taxpayers, but also this year was really important that our employees that we value so much, because they're the ones who keep, they're the glue that keeps the city running and going. So that and the bond referendum are the major, major things in this budget, and I think it will show in a big way. So it's a long letter, we tried to include as much information in here as possible. And so it's, there's been a lot of effort that's been put into the air. Anyway, dear council members, even though the worst of the pandemic is likely behind us, the city continues to face new challenges and must position the FY 2223 operating budget and capital improvement program to remain flexible and manage baseline services during times of economic and inflationary uncertainty. Even still, the city has made it its priority to take steps to provide fiscal relief of opportunities for taxpayers, businesses, and nonprofit organizations during the last two years. And the budget for FY 2223 continues to address this as a priority area of concern, communicated from city council. With the adoption of the 2223 operating budget, those fiscal relief efforts total more than $144 million to date. A portion of this relief effort is associated with Virginia Beach's continued effort to provide personal property tax relief for mitigating the impacts of the valuations of vehicles for this calendar year and next year. And next year. Even in the face of labor shortages and increased demand for services, the city of Virginia Beach remains committed to offering tax relief. As is the case every year, demand for services and articulated needs far exceed revenue projections. City council heard the voice of the public in reducing the tax rate of $1.013 as recommended by the city manager's FY 2223 proposed operating budget to a tax rate of 99 cents. This is the same tax rate adopted by city council in the current year, 2122. And even though the tax rate is being reduced, city council has not lost focus of flood protection and needs throughout the city. The adopted FY 2223 operating budget will reflect a new flood protection fund with a real estate tax dedication equivalent of 4.1 cents to support the debt service associated with the approved $567.5 million bond referendum. This translates to an operating budget utilizing 94.9 cents in real estate revenue to support and maintain baseline services and dedicates 4.1 cents to the newly established fund. Similar to the city, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is in a good position to maintain core services and even grow in some areas in FY 2223. Through the use of expanded resources from the Commonwealth, $21.5 million, and via the revenue sharing formula, $27.7 million, BBCPS has proposed an operating budget with a robust emphasis on staffing and compensation needs. The school's proposed budget includes nearly $47 million in compensated related increases, incorporating a 5% salary increase, adjusting various ranges for hard-to-fill positions, adding 58.48 FTEs, and reducing employee healthcare premium costs. The school's capital improvement program also includes a significant investment for school modernization needs with the full funding of Betty F. Williams Elementary Schools, which is $68 million, and Princess Anne High School at $162.5 million within the six-year CIP within the FY 2223 operating budget and CIP. BBCPS is able to sustainably support all of these initiatives with reliance on less than $1 million from their school special revenue fund. The adopted budget meets all of the funding needs and requirements put forth by BBCPS in their proposed operating budget. Today, Virginia Beach remains a regional leader with some of the lowest tax rates and a thriving local economy. These and other notable investments in the community will continue to make Virginia Beach a safe and welcoming city for citizens and visitors alike. On March 22nd, 2022, the city manager presented the proposed FY 2223 operating budget and CIP. After several weeks of city council workshops, departmental briefings, and public input at hearings, and via social media, it is recommended that the operating budget and CIP be adopted with the following adjustments. Number one is to reduce the real estate rate tax by 2.3 cents from the city manager's proposed tax rate of $1.013 per 100 assessed value to 99 cents per 100 assessed value, and reduce estimated real estate tax revenue within the general fund by $15,705,412. The proposed budget included a 4.1 cent real estate tax dedication to support the flood protection program, bond referendum approved by over 72% of voters in November of 2021. Of the total 4.1 cents, 2.3 cents was to be supported through a proposed tax increase with 1.8 cents being absorbed through natural growth and real estate tax revenue. Eliminating this tax results, increase results in the city's absorbing the full cost of flood protection programs, bond referendum, with no change to the 99 cent tax rate improved in the current year, FY 2122. Of the total 99 cent tax rate, 4.1 cents will remain dedicated to the flood protection program within a standalone fund acting as a lockbox, with the remaining 94.9 cents supporting other base operations and services. Number two is to reduce the Sandbridge real estate tax rate by 2 cents, decreasing the FY 2223 real estate tax revenue within the Sandbridge SSD fund by $297,643. This reduction in revenue will be offset through an equivalent reduction in Sandbridge Special Service. Special Service District Fund reserved for contingencies. Due to the healthy performance of hotel tax revenues dedicated to the fund, this reduction in real estate tax revenue is not anticipated to negatively impact the sand replenishment cycle or prevent the current practice of ensuring two replenishments are funded at all times. Number three, on December fourteenth, the council, city council made a motion to defer two personal property tax relief initiatives and a B-Pole tax relief initiative through, brought forth by the Commissioner of Revenue to a date certain of May tenth. Subsequently, on March fifteenth, city council acted reducing personal property tax rates to one millionth of one cent on each one hundred dollars of assessed value and on vehicles on individuals at least sixty-five years of age or anyone found to be permanently and totally disabled, as well as tangible personal property for new businesses that qualify for the business license incentive program. Implementing this tax rate in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three results in the need to reduce the city manager's proposed personal property tax revenues by three hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. This reduction, when combined with applying fair market value to vehicle assessments cost avoidance of forty-two million dollars and absorbing the bond referendum dedication within the current year's tax rate of ninety-nine cents per hundred assessed value, which is twenty-eight million, it resulted in a significant amount of tax relief and cost avoidance for residents. To implement the B-Pole recommendations of the CRR would result in the need to reduce the proposed operating budget by additional two point two million dollars. Considering the relief initiatives already being put forth and understanding the baseline needs for city operations, it is recommended that considerations to modify B-Pole threshold reductions be deferred indefinitely. Number four, utilize the thirty-two point eight million dollar general fund compensation reserve included as a part of the manager's proposed budget to implement a hybrid pay plan system and a citywide minimum wage of fifteen dollars per hour. I think that deserves applause.
Yes, it does. It does. That's a move.
We got, we got there, Aaron.
We did, together.
Yes. The hybrid step includes a step pay plan.
Thank you.
For public safety and a portion of the general workforce. The step plan will be based on years of service, which is what our employees asked for, with a goal of three percent separation between each step. Implementation of this step plan will cover eighty percent of the city's workforce and is the largest change to the overall pay structure within the last twenty years. The goal is to provide every full-time and part-time city employee a minimum five percent compensation increase, which will be handled in accordance with city policy. And of the total citywide cost to implement, the cost associated with public utilities and stormwater enterprise funds reduce the burdens on this reserve and allows for the implementation of fifteen dollars per hour minimum wage with little additional impact to the general fund. The total compensation reserve within the general fund will not support only the general fund, but other funds should they not be able to absorb this increase such as Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund, Sheriff's Office Special Revenue Fund, and the Waste Management Fund. Number five, increase general fund non-departmental contribution by fifty thousand dollars to provide one-time grant funding to support the Sunrise Christian Music Festival to be held in Virginia Beach in September twenty-twenty-two. Number six, to increase general fund non-departmental contributions by fifty thousand dollars to provide one-time grant funding to the Urban Renewal Center. These funds will be utilized to implement the Impact Youth Arts Program in Virginia Beach, which will consist of fifteen-week courses in dance, theater, and voting. Number seven, reduce funding within general fund non-departmental operating budget micro grant. This item and establish a line item for a one-time grant contribution of five thousand dollars to transgender assistance program of a Virginia TAP. These funds will be used to support ending homelessness within the transgender community in Virginia. Number eight, increase general fund non-departmental regional grants by eight thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars for a one-time contribution to support the Great Neck Athletic Association Football Program and all volunteer organization directly affiliated with the Virginia Beach Department of Parks and Recreation to support tackle football Virginia Beach youth. Number nine, increase the general fund municipal council operating budget by three thousand dollars to further support the Ignite Series. Number ten, increase Cultural Affairs General Fund operating budget by fifty thousand dollars for increased support to the Arts and Humanity Commission Grant Program and to redirect a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of the Arts and Humanity Commission grant funding for a separate line item to make a direct contribution to the Museum of Contemporary Arts, MOKA, in the form of a grant. The hundred and fifteen thousand dollars being redirected is the FY twenty-one, twenty-two amount awarded to MOKA through the Arts and Humanities Competitive Grant Process. Providing these funds is a direct grant contribution to MOKA, and it will reduce any burden placed on MOKA staff when applying for the grant. Every year they apply and every year they get it, so we thought it was good to go ahead and just give it to them directly. Number eleven, increase Cultural Affairs TIP Fund operating budget by twenty-five thousand dollars for increased support to the Boardwalk Art Show and FY twenty-two, twenty-three. The city will provide MOKA with a contribution amount totaling two hundred thousand, five hundred dollars to support the Virginia Beach Boardwalk Art Show. Support for this initiative will be provided through the appropriation of fund balance within the TIP Fund. Number twelve, redirect funding within the general fund municipal council's operating budget to support independent citizen review panel through the use of contractual services. This results in the elimination of a proposed new FTE and redirect a hundred and ten thousand in funding to operating accounts to support the independent citizen review panel. Number thirteen, increase the Tourism Investment Program TIP funding in the Department of Cultural Affairs operating budget by a hundred and forty thousand for grant contribution to the Vibe Creative District. Support for this initiative will be provided through the appropriation of fund balance within the TIP Fund. When combined with the sixty thousand dollars typically provided through the Virginia Beach Arts and Humanities total funding to the Creative Vibe District, it would be two hundred thousand dollars. With these funds, the Vibe Creative District will improve branding, marketing, and advertising, provide programming events, and supplement artists and contractual manpower for staffing support. Ongoing support at this level will be evaluated annually and will be determined by TIP Fund capacity and the annual spend of these funds by the Vibe Creative District. Number fourteen, increase the Open Space Fund authorized FTE count by six point four, increasing salaries and operating accounts by four hundred and thirty-one thousand, twenty-three dollars, and increasing the open space pay-as-you-go transfer to the CIP by one million dollars to the Parks and Recreation CIP section. To balance the fund, one million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, twenty-three dollars is reduced from the open space reserve for contingencies. Number fifteen, increase the general fund Emergency Management Services EMS operating budget by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to convert twelve new EMT FTEs included in the proposed budget to paramedics. Number sixteen, increase the Town Center Special Service Fund Economic Development operating budget by three hundred thousand dollars for enhanced entertainment and security enhancements, providing block-by-block security for the grounds and plaza. This includes ambassadors during the peak summer season to address the daily grounds cleanliness and engage with patrons. Support for this initiative will be provided through the appropriation of fund balance within the Town Center SSD. Number seventeen, increase the City of Virginia Beach Public Schools Grant Special Revenue Fund operating budget by fourteen million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. This increase in appropriations are supported through the estimated increase of fourteen million, four hundred and thirty-two dollars, three hundred and sixty-five dollars in federal revenue. These funds will be utilized on construction renovation projects to replace entire HVAC systems in identified schools, identify additional funds for Title One personnel and benefits, additional teachers and counselors from summer school, additional teachers, counselors, and bus drivers for before and after-school programs, online STEM resources for before and after-school programs, fuel for before and after-school programs, stipends for reading and math teachers, teaching online in face-to-face sections of the same course, courses at the same time, take-home manipulatives for students to address unfinished learning, and funds for support transportation and counselors for homeless students. Number eighteen, ahead of the FY twenty-three, twenty-four operating process, the city manager is to provide a report to city council with options to establish sustainable Parks and Recreation Recreation Center Plan. This report will not be a recommendation for support, but instead will be used to provide city council and the public with the clarity and the overall facility maintenance and long-term replacement modernizations needs are for the existing city recreational centers. Per a consultant, based on current facility conditions and age, the priority of modernization needs are to the following order: Great Neck, Bayside, Princess Anne, and Sea-Tac. Included within the report will be a projection of the cost for construction and operational needs, as well as information of what funding gaps might exist. Number nineteen, to improve the effectiveness and efficiency of government and the delivery of services, the city manager is authorized to redirect long-term vacancies and their associated salary and fringe benefit costs to make organizational adjustments necessary to implement the following initiatives. To improve existing technology services applications, as well as streamline the implementation of new technology applications and services throughout the city. To provide the members of city council with administrative and clerical support staff and executive assistants. To provide additional FTE to the resort management office in their efforts to improve customer service and streamline service delivery with the public and business community. Offsets in revenue. Number twenty, to provide resources and offsets for the changes related to items one through nineteen, the following adjustments are made. Increased elimination, excuse me, increased estimated revenues from the State Compensation Board of one million, one hundred and eighty-two dollars, six hundred and thirty-four dollars of this amount, three hundred and thirty-nine, four hundred and eighty-one dollars is estimated within the general fund and eight hundred and forty-three, one hundred and fifty-three dollars within the Share Special Revenue Fund. Transfer to the Share Special Revenue Fund from the general fund for a compensation increase reduced by a height, by a like amount. Increase estimated five ninety-nine state revenue within the general fund by one million, two hundred and eight, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. General fund interest income is increased by one million dollars. Reduce the emergent needs reserve within the general fund by seven million dollars. Eliminate six point four FTEs and reduce four hundred and thirty-one and twenty-three dollars within the Parks and Recreation General Fund operating budget and resource the general fund pay-as-you-go transfer to the CIP by one million dollars. Reduce the general fund pay-as-you-go transfer to the city CIP by four, four million, five hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and two million dollars of this reduction being offset by the use of general fund, fund balance in the year one of the, of the six-year CIP. Increase the use of attrition savings by a hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars within the general fund. Then under CIP, number twenty-one, increase funding for CIP number one thousand, six, sixteen, MOKA building rehabilitation by one million dollars in year two of the six-year CIP and by one million, three hundred and sixty-two dollars, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars in year three of the six-year CIP. The acceleration of this funding results in the reduction of two million, two million, three hundred and sixty-two dollars, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars programmed in year five of the six-year CIP. The funding source supported the acceleration of the project and general fund pay-as-you-go increases in year two and three of the six-year CIP with two million, three hundred and sixty-two, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars in general fund balance reduced in the year five of the six-year CIP. Acceleration of this project will allow the city to begin maintenance work on the MOKA and better, and better coordinate these efforts with their reaccreditation timeline. Number twenty-two, increase CIP one thousand, fifty-eight Centerville Turnpike Phase Three by six million dollars in year one of the six-year CIP with federal revenue increasing accordingly. This funding was, was secured by the hard work of the federal delegation and will allow for the full funding of this project during the six-year CIP. Number twenty-three, since the presentation of the city manager's proposed FY twenty-two, twenty-three operating budget and CIP, the city was notified of additional funding to be provided by the state to support the six-year CIP. A total of sixteen million, five hundred and seventy-eight, six hundred and twenty-five dollars in state revenue was secured through the hard work of the state delegation and the chair of the Appropriations Committee. This funding is to be allocated within the six-year CIP by the following amounts for the following projects. Increase CIP one hundred, two hundred and seventy-eight Nemo Parkway Seven B by ten million dollars in year one of the six-year CIP with state revenue increased accordingly. This funding reduces the local obligations to the projected reducing, project reducing the need for local funding in year five of the six-year CIP. As a result, ten million dollars is reduced in year five of the six-year CIP with program charter bonds reduced by the same amount. Ten million dollars in charter bond capacity is preserved for future use by city council. Establish CIP one thousand, six, thirty-seven Punggoh Ferry Landing Park improvements in the FY twenty-two, twenty-three six-year with two million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars programmed in year one of the six-year CIP. The means of financing for this project is two million, five hundred and eighty-five, six hundred and twenty-five dollars in state revenue. Establish CIP one thousand, six, thirty-seven, the Owl Creek Boat ramps in the FY twenty-two, twenty-three six-year with three million, three million, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars programmed in the year one of the six-year CIP. The means of financing for this project is three million, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars, thousand dollars in state revenue. Number twenty-four, reduce, sorry, two million, five hundred and fourteen, nine hundred and seventy dollars in the general fund pay-as-you-go in year one of the CIP with appropriations to the following projects reduced accordingly. CIP one hundred, one oh seven, the Network Infrastructure Replacement Three, which is a million dollars. CIP one thousand, six, twenty-five, which is the Virginia Aquarium Security Cameras, which is five hundred and fifty, one thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. CIT one thousand, six, twenty-three Migration of Virginia Aquarium Viscada to the city network, which is four hundred and three thousand dollars. And CIT one thousand, six, twenty-six Public Use Library United Meeting Space Modernization, which is five hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Should allowable state, federal, and local resources become available throughout the year, heavy consideration will be given in restoring these funds being removed as, as part of reconciliation. And as we know, we don't have a state budget yet, so we're hoping that some money will come in from the state to, to put these back in. Number twenty-five, reduce CIP one thousand, six, thirty-one Resort Area Site Acquisition by thirty-two million, one hundred dollars, one hundred thousand dollars in year one of the six-year CIP from the reduction, a total of twenty million, one hundred thousand dollars along with the program public facility bond funding is being eliminated from the six-year CIP and preserved as future debt capacity within, within the TIP Fund. The remaining twelve million dollars is being redirected to the Increase CIP one thousand, one forty-six Atlantic Park Entertainment Venue by eight million dollars and CIP one thousand, six oh six Atlantic Park Offsite Infrastructure by four million dollars, both in year one of the six-year CIP. The need for these increases is the result of construction cost increases driven by supply chain issues and overall inflation. The split between the project referenced above are estimates, and should the amounts differ, the city manager's authorized to transfer between these two projects in an amount not to exceed twelve million dollars. Prior to the transfer, the city manager will provide a report expressing the intent, reasoning, and amount to be transferred. Details about the funding sources and appropriate adjustments outlined in this letter are identified on the attachments. We want to thank the citizens who participated in public hearings or weighed in on total, on social media to offer their comments in the FY twenty-two, twenty-three operating budget and CIP and the staff members who made every effort to provide answers to our various questions and... to provide answers to our various questions and respond to our requests for information. If you have any questions, please contact us directly, and that's Robert Bobby and Dyer Mayor and Rosemary Wilson, Vice Mayor.
Okay, and then, you know, we'll make sure we get a signed copy, you know, to everybody. We had a couple of last-minute changes and I apologize for. Okay, open for discussion. Mr. Moss.
Well, as I expressed all you in an email, and I suspect some of you read it and probably someone didn't see it. I have been. I provided my budget on Friday, not today, at two-thirty and my adjustments, but I'm not going to talk about those because I've done a video and people can watch it. I would like to make my slide presentation part of the record, or I'm happy to give it here today if that's appropriate. But I would think that no one's changing their mind, but I'd like it to be part of the record if there's no objection.
Okay.
Hearing none.
Okay, does anybody object to Mr. Moss, you know, having the opportunity to express?
And I would, I'll need more time to look at this to do any thoughtful analysis. But I do want to read a letter that we all received. And I think it best represents what my budget reflects, which does include retroactively paying people the minimum wage they didn't receive in this budget year. But this letter we all got on Tuesday afternoon prior to our public hearing, many of you may have saw it from Amanda, I've talked about it often. And this was her email to us. Dear Council Members, I'm writing to let you know I'm not in favor of the proposed increase in real estate taxes. And the ninety-nine cents is an eight point six-six percent increase in the real estate tax rate. You only have to look at the published notice to know the math for that. The proposed tax increase will roomen working families and elderly individuals on a fixed income. The city needs to find ways to help its citizens instead of trying to fund new fancy projects. I want to give you the perspective of a working family of five who lives in Virginia Beach. Here is the little background I'm talking about. We have three children, ages five, three, and seven months. I drive a two thousand and eleven used SUV, and my husband drives a two thousand used Honda Civic with over two hundred thousand miles. We both work full-time jobs. I'm in the seventh grade as a teacher, and my husband is going on twenty years working for a neighboring county. Together, we make around ninety thousand dollars before taxes. This should be a livable wage for us, but it isn't. Due to tax increases from last year, my payment went up to fifty-nine dollars monthly this year, and the city wants more. Not only did the tax increase, everything I purchased in my daily life has also increased. My grocery bill, which was around a hundred to a hundred and ten per week, is now a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy dollars per week. Gas prices to get to work have increased, and utilities have increased. In addition, I work a part-time job for additional income. My husband works side work for additional income, and we are barely affording the quote lavish lifestyle unquote. We are living, and the city wants more. We made informed choices about what we could afford. We put a small amount of money away in every paycheck and do all the right things, and yet, we are struggling to maintain. I can't cut back anymore. I already purchased store brand essentials. I use coupons, buy in bulk when I can. And my kids deserve to have birthday parties, holiday presents, and of all things that come along with being a child. But soon, we will have to dip into those funds in order to maintain. To further my point about the crunch on families, here's a fun fact. I couldn't afford to throw my child a park birthday party at one of our four gorgeous city parks. The rising cost of basic party items for six kids and their parents included party food, a drink, basic entertainment, meaning bubbles and chalk, a small craft for the kids, and decorations added up to around a hundred and sixty-five dollars. This does not include a birthday present from mom and dad. To rent a shelter at one of the parks, depending on half-day or full-day, is seventy to a hundred and forty dollars for a resident. A small child's birthday would have cost a little more than three hundred dollars for the basics. I bring this to your attention because these are the choices your working families are making daily. We ourselves are robbing Peter to pay Paul. I beg you to vote no to increase real estate taxes. Thank you for your attention to this matter, Amanda, and all of you got this. So if you want to get the actual verbatim and authenticate that, you can get that from the city clerk. But I ran into someone just today to close out, trying to gas their car. And I noticed that they put in, like, two gallons. And I just was just listening because they were talking and because the kid was asking, well, that's not going to fill up very much. And the mom said, well, that's all I have right now. So when we talk about this budget and the abstract of ninety-nine cents, which is a tax increase, it has real meaning at the deck plate. And if we don't think our budget has more margin than the working families and seniors in our community, we are mistaken. Grossly mistaken. I've offered alternative, which I will be talking about now that I have something to compare it to and show the difference. But we can do better, Mr. Mayor and my colleagues. We can get the ninety-one cents, pay the bond referendum, increase the dollars for compensation. That's all doable. But we can't do all these other things that no family would do to rob Peter to pay Paul. So what we're really saying is we can take care of ourselves as a city entity, do right by our city employees, which we should do, but we can't do right by our taxpayers. I think that is not a good story, and it's not a story I'll be telling in my district. But I know you all feel strongly about your budget, but we have missed an opportunity, and many people will pay the price. And Amanda is going to now have to find out where to make additional cuts in her needs because we couldn't do our job. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank Vice Mayor Wilson there. I know there was a ton of reading, and he did a great job with that, so I just wanted to say thank you for that. You know, with respect to this reconciliation, I, my focus for, among the many needs that we have throughout the city, one of the things I wanted to focus on, and especially going throughout our retreat, and I want to make sure, you know, I give appreciation for this body. Because one of the things I wanted to focus on was taking care of our staff and making sure that, you know, we can implement a step play plan, we can get to fifteen-dollar minimum wage, and we can make sure we are, there's equity in that plan by years of service. And so I am just, I am elated to see this in here, and I know what that means for our men and women who take care of our city. That includes our first responders as well. And those men and women down in public works and public utilities who have been waiting decades for a salary increase. And so for this, this, this body to get that done and get this inside of this reconciliation, I'm just, I can't be more ecstatic. And so I just want to say thank you for that. And I just leave with this quote from Vince Lombardi. Individual commitment to a group effort, that is what makes a team work. A company work, a society work, and a civilization work. So thank you for that. I know we have to continuously scrutinize this budget, as with every budget, and open to that. But to see that we are taking care of the men and women who take care of our city, I couldn't be more proud. Thank you.
Aaron, thank you for efforts on their behalf.
Yes, well said.
Okay, Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to to say that I know that it's been a lot of hard work, blood, sweat, and tears for the staff who have come out and advocated for themselves for many, many years without receiving the just due compensation that's due to them. They fought for this. And so it is good to see that information was included. But make no mistake about it, they fought for it. They deserve it. Now, I'll continue to review what's listed here. I do see some items that I thought were previously included that were not. And so I'll continue to review this information and ask questions until I make sure that we are doing what we're supposed to do in the best interest of the community at large. But again, those, the staff, you know, who's, you know, listening to the stories, the testimonies, heartbreaking, but they fought for it. I think they, they earned that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, and I sympathize with Councilmember Moss on the tax relief for our citizens, and that's a paramount issue for all of us. But when Sheriff Stolli was here, giving testimony, and he said that the state had reduced what they give him from fifty percent of his budget to forty percent. And the state's, I think, going to be really working on tax relief for our citizens as well. I'd just like to get some kind of a report on what we are making up in terms of state obligations, because I think in a way we're assisting the state with those tax relief issues that they're going to give, because we have a choice of not picking up the slack or picking up the slack, and we always pick up the slack because we want these constitutional office departments to be well-funded and up to speed. So I'd just like to get those numbers because that's stuck in my mind, that they're reducing, and we're picking up, and then they're giving tax relief. And I kind of feel like I'm glad, and, but that's a reality that we're picking up that slack so they're able to give maximum tax relief.
Anybody else at this point? You know, I'd like to thank everybody for their collective efforts. You know, it takes a lot for us to put a budget together. We're the largest city in the Commonwealth. Four hundred and sixty thousand people strong. What do we have, seven thousand, four hundred employees, and that doesn't even include schools. It takes a lot to run a city twenty-four, seven, effectively and efficiently. Virginia Beach joins all the other cities in the seven-five-seven and the Commonwealth and this nation that are going through the same turmoil. Many, many people are going through the same stressors that many of our residents are going through. We, as a city, this is our first budget out of COVID where we were strained. And I will venture to say again, we came together as a city, as a council, with management, everybody, we made it through very well. Last year, during the height of COVID, we were able to get the right money into the right people. We were able to get our beaches open a couple of years ago. The hotels were able to rebound to the point where we could at least put a budget together. And, you know, very, and you know, I'm very, you know, you know, John, I can't argue with you, but you know, the point being that we're going forward that we identified two extreme priorities, especially during our council retreat and with the public hearings. Number one, stormwater, 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 and we came through. We were able to put together a compelling case where seventy-two percent of the taxpayers said, let's get it done. And then we take a look at the other priority. You know, we, as a city, cannot function. And, you know, Rosemary and I met with some of the folks from Waste Management and Public Services the other day. And they were saying, yeah, there was one individual that says, if there's one guy on my particular crew doesn't show up, we can't go out and do the work. And we're looking at what other cities are doing for us. You know, and, you know, in terms of, you know, potential move. All the cities are in the same boat we are. But I'll tell you what, I really think that we're a little bit of a financial posture based on our conservancy and, you know, what we have done to set the table going into this year. But once again, taking care of the two top priorities actually resulted in about seven cents of the tax rate. But once again, you know, I just want to thank this council. You know, with these type of things, you're never going to come to a hundred percent consensus. But I think the level of participation and interaction among the council, and I want to thank everyone on council, the vice mayor, and everybody because it reflected a lot of inputs. It doesn't reflect everybody's, some people got a lot, some people, you know, didn't get everything in. But the point is, finding a balance during tough times is a challenge. And now, once again, the idea is now all of a sudden, at least moving forward, putting this into resolutions and stuff and ready for a vote. But once again, you know, Virginia Beach is a resilient and tenacious city, and I think this effort reflects it. And we're going to come out of this together better and stronger, but once again, I want to thank you all. Yes?
I did have a question about this letter that we got today from the city manager, which talks about the hybrid plan, and I guess this is a an allocation of years of service based on fifty percent. And I think that's the important thing to recommend, you know, that's extremely important in recognizing that. And is there a cap for the amount of increase someone, you would say that everybody's going to get a minimum of five percent increase? Is there a cap as a maximum, or is that?
There is, there is no cap because to keep it a years of service, the cap wouldn't work to make it to, to make it a years of service plan. So there isn't a cap. We just operated to get it within the thirty-two point eight compensation reserve that council authorized.
But we, for, for those who will not be on the step, this is where the market salary survey would, would
Correct. So for, so if council adopts this, employees in the age thirteen and above, open range, will, will get the market adjustment that was in line with what the market salary survey consulting correction. Hold on a second. All right, at a minimum, open range employees are going to get a five percent minimum. But then some, we kind of applied the same similar calculus for them on their years of service. So if they're on a certain quartile in the range, based on years of service, we place the open range employees on that quartile based on their years of service to kind of balance it to be similar to how the step plan employees are working out.
There's just a lot of moving parts to this whole thing. And then also, the letter does address that the fifteen dollars an hour minimum was able to be absorbed within. I think there was also a certain amount that would need to be applied to address potential compression, and so that's within this amount as well?
Correct. If it, and if it, if there's incidental amounts that aren't covered there, it could be covered through attrition. But between the general fund and the enterprise funds, it'll cover the cost increase for the fifteen-dollar employees and also the hybrid step plan if council adopts that.
Okay, there's just a lot to understand here to be able to answer questions.
Oh, yeah. Easy, John?
Well, I inferred from the little bit I watched, watched on this thing, that you're going to come back and show us what this is and the mechanics of its implementation prior to July first. Because once before, you said you wouldn't be in a position to implement it on July first because there was a lot of work to be done. So when is the effective implementation of the plan? Because I, because I've heard two different things. We can do it by July first. Oh, no, we can't do all of it by July first. We can do this. So will we get, I'm not asking for it today, but I think before Tuesday, I would like to know what is the phased implementation? I'm sure the employees would like to know as well.
We included that in the document. I think what we said, and Regina will clarify if I'm wrong, is that if council adopts this, the moment they do, we need about two months. We need about sixty days in order to actually implement this and get it done. And we think we can achieve it in that timeframe. If we're not able to, we'll definitely let council know. If for some reason we take longer than that, we could also retroactive implementation. But we think we need about eight weeks to get all the IT changes made in the system. And we do say that this is going to be a sea change in how we currently compensate employees. So we're going to try to make sure we do it as accurately and correctly as possible. But we got about seven thousand employees, and it's likely that we're going to make probably about ten, fifteen, maybe fifty mistakes. But we'll work as quickly as possible when we find out those mistakes to rectify if council adopts this plan.
And if council
Okay, I'm sorry, John.
If we were to decide to pay people, find more money, which I know we can, to pay people retroactively who made less than fifteen dollars an hour, to make them whole for the year they worked, since that was a big issue. they worked, since that was a big issue, that could be equally implemented during that 60 days?
I gotta look at that to see what that.
All right, I appreciate that answer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to further comment that the, the letter did say that if this implementation takes beyond July 1, we can implement the system retroactively. So I suppose all of that needs to be taken care of as you're looking in all this, because obviously this is going to be an awful lot of individual adjustment with employees and how they're going to fit on these plans, and it's going to be not simple, I think, that we'll find out. But I would just like to just comment, and I really appreciate all the time that Mr. Moss has spent, and I, and I appreciate all of the comments that he made. And, but I think the important thing, and once we get into this with employee pay, is that we really cannot rely on one-time-only funding, such as some of this federal excess money and so forth. I mean, that was nice, we got a little bit used to it during the pandemic, that was the one good part of the pandemic, I guess, but we can't rely on one-time money in whatever we're going to be doing, particularly when we're dealing with the pay structure. It has to be ongoing money, it can't be on, it can't be one-time. And so we can't do a one-year budget. It has to be a budget that's going to be able to stand next year as well. And who knows what's going to happen by next year? We could be revisiting 2008, and that's what I worry about. But it, both of these, I think, are very important documents, the reconciliation letter, Mr. Moss's letter, and appreciate all the work all of you've done, and thank you.
Now, I tell you, you know, and, you know, this is my, my observation with everything's going on. We still don't have a state budget done yet, and, you know, the budgeting things, you know, it seems to me is no longer one-year, once-a-year process. It's somewhat of an ongoing, you know, process, and as things improve and things change. And the other thing, too, is to help out the folks in the community that need that, is to leverage a lot of the resources that are available. We have a number, it's amazing, groups out there trying to help folks that are really struggling these days. And one of the things that, you know, we can actually help try to do is, you know, get some, you know, the people that are out there that are willing to, you know, help fund those groups, you know, the, you know, the private sector and other folks, the faith-based communities have really stepped to the plate over the years. But once again, you know, I think in spite of all the gloom, I think there's sources of optimism that we, as a city, you know, are look forward to, and I think it reflects the efforts of the city council to get to where we are today. Okay, thank you. At this point, city council liaison reports.
Can we talk about something else before we do that?
Yeah.
Briefly. Again, thank everyone for all of your input and all the discussions and everything that we had, and this was, definitely was, it was a lot of work, but it's, it's very rewarding. Did want to mention that, if you haven't heard, but you probably have, that our wonderful real estate assessor is retiring. And so we're going to be having to go through process, and he's our appointee, so we're going to have to do a search and have interviews and all of that sort of thing. So, do we have time to talk about that today? It looks like we're getting tight with our time.
It's, it's up to council. We have several things in closed session that we need to discuss, but if council wants, we can have Regina come in, articulate just a brief synopsis on what the process could look like. You could use a search firm, or you may decide to use our in-house staff to recruit for the position.
If I just may suggest, it might be more prudent at our next session where we just get together and chat about things, you know, to talk about it then, just, but at least understand that we're going to have to wind up with a replacement, and give each council person the ability, okay, think about, you know, you know, once again, and, you know, it's a very important position, I think we could all.
And I wanted to bring it up, because there is a timeline of when we have to have this done, is that correct, Amanda or Regina?
Is there a law that governs?
That's Regina.
I don't think, is there a timeline?
Is there a timeline with? No, replacing.
No, there's no timeline with a budget, what are you talking about?
Kevin has.
We could just tell the school board, wait till August.
Kevin has done a fantastic, no, but as far as with advertising and getting, is, and having to replace them?
Vice, sorry, Vice Mayor, I don't think there's a real hard, fast timeline. I think at the, if Mr. Agnor leaves the city's employ, then you'd need to name an acting.
Okay.
And that, and then authorize the acting to act in the capacity as a real estate assessor, then council can go through the process and determine the right candidate.
Anyway, I want everybody to be thinking about it, this is an upcoming topic.
And the process will be public. Miss Emily?
I guess I missed the notification, where was it?
I don't know, was there a notification?
I just heard it through the grapevine, I never got a notice.
Yeah.
Whispered from Amanda, so.
Yeah, we were, we were going to make the notification in close today, but then the city attorney said we had, you know, a speak about it out in open a little bit, but, you know, his notification to us was recent.
He will be missed.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, now liaison.
Okay, liaison reports now.
I couldn't.
Yes?
Next Tuesday, I see Walter's in the audience, but we'll be hearing from Frightened Trailways, their annual report, we'll be receiving that, and also Walter received, like our good colleague here, Mr. Rouse, Hampton Roads Special Volunteer Recognition a couple of weeks back. But anyway, they'll be presenting that report, I think, if you all got it in advance, I think we'll see all the good work that they did, and that's my only liaison report for today.
Okay, Mr. Beluch.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to share that on Thursday, the 11th of May, the Human Rights Commission will be hosting their annual awards ceremony, where many people from our community who's, who have been champions for human rights will be recognized for their work. I'm told by the chair that this is the 30th anniversary, I think, of the Human Rights Commission, it's not the award, maybe both. I think that's a substantial accomplishment, certainly, not only for our Human Rights Commission, but for, for our city, that we've been active in supporting the work of that commission for so long, and that our city has had a Human Rights Commission for that long. Certainly, the work continues, as we all know, but I'm really excited for them to celebrate 30 years and thankful for their work.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, John?
No, I don't have anything for liaison, just council initiatives.
Okay, anybody else, council discussion or anything? John?
I know we have used contract firms to help us do permitting on big projects, and I know that my good, honorable colleague over there, Mr. Branches, with process improvement, but I think it would be good to look at the performance of our contract performers on big projects, and whether that can be scaled down to small projects, and, and maybe we should do that for all commercial work and use our organic staff when people are like putting a deck on the back of their house, building a patio. But one of the things I hear often, and I've just heard some more stories this morning, people are not doing the mega project thing, losing tenants because it takes long, the prices go up. So I would just like to see if we can downscale that application and then reforce, refocus our organic things on our homeowners and whatnot for inspections. I just throw that out there as Lynn would have been looking, I think that merits some comparison.
And that was kind of what the genesis of the Process Improvement Committee was supposed to do.
I like to second that, because I've also heard just from small business owners who are, you know, obviously they rent a space and they can't get a permit, and 30 or 60 days, they end up, can't afford the space any longer because they're not in business. So, I think that's a great idea to see if we can small-scale that.
Now, I tell you, great suggestions, great talk. Anybody else? Just let everybody know, this Friday, the mayors and the 757 are reconvening at the Hampton Roads District Office. And once again, the topic is going to be, you know, violence in the cities. We had a meeting with, which Rosemary attended, we got our own Virginia Beach branch going that Rosemary's overseeing, and we met recently with the Bob Morrissey, who's the Secretary of Public Safety and Homeland Defense, and he's going to be meeting with all of the mayors in the 7, you know, 757, and then, once again, he's going to attend one of our meetings. You know, it's obviously that violence, especially youth violence, is a, you know, hot topic nationally. And, you know, we can't fix what goes on nationally, but we sure can maybe make a difference here locally. But this is just to let you know that, you know, we are engaged, Donnie Tuck and I from Hampton. But once again, I, I just got to say the way that all the seven mayors in the 757 that we've been dealing with, but we also had Pacosa and Iowa White there, and, you know, the only way we're going to actually confront this is to come together. You know, violence does not honor anybody's border. And the thing is, we have to come up with the practical solutions that work and have those conversations that may be uncomfortable, but once again, you know, we have to address the problem, but once again, I want to commend a lot of folks at the, you know, the Dyes here today, that, you know, have had this front and center in their minds, and, you know, your willingness to participate, but it'll be an open meeting on Friday at the Hampton Roads Planning Commission at 12:30, if anybody wants to pop in, okay? Okay, are we all set there? All right, agenda review. That's you, Rosemary.
That's a gift. Okay. So, we've got public hearings. Formal session on ordinances and resolutions. Ordnance to grant two franchise agreements to open markets on public property to Old Beach Art Market and Old Beach Farmers Market. Is everybody okay with that? Number two, the resolution to re-adopt procedures for the selection evaluation award of design, build, and construction management contracts. Everybody okay with that? Number three, resolution to authorize the issuance of revenue bonds to exceed, not to exceed 16 million by the City of Virginia Beach Development Authority for Cape Henry Collegiate School.
Vice Mayor, we have speakers on that item.
Okay. Number four, is ordinance to approve the sale of school board property at 1413 Alaskan Road and allow the school board to retain the sale proceeds.
I will standing and have a disclosure letter that I have to read into the record.
And we also have speakers on that item as well, we need to poll.
Okay. Number five, A, 31,866.72, from Firehouse Subs, Public Safety Foundation to the FY2122.
31,000.
That's 31,000, okay, sorry, 31,000, that's good. Just, it's amazing what one.
Yeah. The Firehouse stuff, they're doing really well.
Anyways, everybody okay with it, 31,000?
It's the 72 cents that throws everybody off. Yeah, really big heart.
Yeah, it threw me off. Everybody, okay, okay. Number B, 26,918.40 from the Virginia Department of Health Office of Emergency Medical Services to the FY2122 Army Emergency Medical Services Operating Budget Regarding Equipment and Training to Support Rescue Squad Operations. Everybody okay? Okay, number C, 131,226 dollars from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services, FY2122 Department of Human Services Operating Budget Regarding the Infant Program. D, 1,914,214 dollars from the Virginia Office of Children's Services, use FY2122 Department of Human Services Operating Budget and Transfer, 171,315 dollars within the FY2122 Department of Human Services to support the required local match regarding children's services art program. Okay, we're on a roll. Number six, 360,677 dollars from the General Fund Reserve Tendencies to FY2122 voter registration electronic operating budget regarding the primary elections, June 21st, B is 15,000 from the city council. Did you want to defer this one?
Sabrina, are we okay to defer that a week, you know, and combine it with the other stuff?
Yes, they agreed to work together to combine.
I tell you what, I think that's going to turn out to be a total win-win. You know, let's go ahead.
Going to defer until May 10?
Till next meeting.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, Sabrina.
Sure. Okay, under planning, number one, the resolution to adopt and amend, I think we're going to have to pull that one, number one. Number two, the ordinance to amend section 201 of the city's ordinance regarding setbacks with the in-ground pools adjacent to the Atlantic Ocean. Is everybody okay with that?
All righty.
I'm sorry, we have speakers on number one, we're planning.
How about number two?
I've already pulled number one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification.
Number two, do you have consent?
Just for clarification on the deferment of Mrs. Wooton's in your item, I just want to just clarify if, if the clerk can just, because we don't have to call a special session, it'd be one, because that's the day of the budget.
It'll just be one special session, but it'll be, we can add that item, make it a part of the call. Yeah, it'd be a separate listing on the call that the mayor will sign, but it's just one agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah. Okay, great, thanks for asking, Erin.
That's it.
All right, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exceptions of the open meeting allowed by section 2.23711A, Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public serve, public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.23711A3, and that would be in the Beach District.
Yeah, this thing's messed up.
And then, public contract, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms and scope of such contract, with the discussion in an open meeting session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body. One, Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, the TCC Hotel Boulevard, Boulevard 45, cost participation agreement, Old Beach Cost Participation Agreement. And then finally, personnel matters, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to section 2.23711A1, and that is council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees to have a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, we're, we're open.